We're going to call the meeting to order. I'll rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everyone. We are going to begin with public comment on agenda items. Do we have anyone here who would like to participate in public comment?
Good evening. Erin Hobbs, 8 Heritage Drive. I am here first as a parent, but I'm also an instructional leader and educator for over the past 20 years. Like many parents, I was heartbroken to hear about the overnight field trip turmoil. I admit, I do not watch every meeting, but I will watch and read the minutes when there is an issue of concern. I did watch the past two meetings, and I was surprised the overnight field trips have been a topic of discussion since October. I then began reading the minutes. Nowhere in the minutes could I find this information. Therefore, I want to take a moment and remind the board that your official records are your minutes. To be honest, after watching the past two meetings, I was slightly horrified. First, the committee in school districts' definition of inclusion is skewed. I heard a great deal of discussion about equity for all students. The thing is, inclusion does not mean removal of opportunity for the sake of equity. Inclusion means the removal of barriers such as money and access to increase opportunity for our most marginalized students. Instead of removing or replacing opportunity, you increase them, making sure every student has access to both academic and extracurriculars. 21st century schools find creative ways to make this happen, and their greatest asset is this community. Therefore, it's frustrating to continually hear from the schools, and now the school committee, that parents are not engaged. I know many of the parents in this community, and I contest that they are active, dedicated members. Engagement was evident with the outpouring of support when this committee deemed overnight trips a financial issue. But parents were quickly redirected to the PTA instead of engaging them. School committee meetings are not the place for community engagement. In my experience, this is the last place you want community engagement, because when families are showing up here, it's never under good circumstances. Best practice around community engagement includes bringing parents, teachers, and students to the table to discuss issues and make decisions on how to improve the schools at a convenient time. This can happen in a variety of ways. All you have to do is ask. School leadership needs to form a committee and just ask. We will show up. If our efforts matter, they currently don't. Lastly, I can't stress enough, transparency and trust are important. At the last meeting, it affirmed my distrust in this SAU. Coming to this meeting tonight, I can't stop myself from wondering how the narrative around the trips on the agenda are going to be manipulated. Was there a small DC incident that would be blown out of proportion? Or are they going to force a vote without any family feedback? It is clear to me that this community is losing trust, and they are tired of asking nicely for constructive change. Two dedicated school board members were replaced in March for a reason. If this community doesn't see positive change soon, I would anticipate continued change to the school committee and eventually the administration. Thank you.
Jennifer Clifford, 10 Wingate Street. Your district goals start with to create and maintain an open dialogue and active listening with all stakeholders. The academy shares this goal too. This doesn't mean listening to your frequent flyers or your favorites. This means two-way communication. The example of overnight field trips just highlights a lack of our two-way communication channels in this district. I want to remind everyone here that SAU 90 accepts federal entitlement funds. Title I requires a family engagement policy that's reviewed annually with families, using their input to revise as needed. Family engagement is not the same as directing parents to join the PTA. And that's no offense to the PTA. They do amazing work. But there's other things that parents should be engaging in in this district. Boards, school or district councils, committees, working groups, surveys, and open questions. Those are all examples given on the New Hampshire Department of Education Family Engagement Guidance, page three. We need to think about those opportunities for families in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
I wasn't going to, but I just wanted to, I guess, reiterate that I agree with the two that just spoke up. What's the matter?
Just your name, sorry. I mean, we know.
Megan Holbrook, sorry. I know. I'm a problem parent.
Just for the minutes.
But one thing, I know that there is going to be something about overnight field trips on the agenda. I'm actually a little bit concerned that we are missing one of our school board members who was actually in support of these field trips. So I'm just a little bit going back to distrust and mistrust and wondering what's going on here. The fact that she isn't here to vote, to me, is a little bit concerning. So I almost question whether or not there even should be a vote without her being present, because I know a lot of parents voted her in because we trusted her, we wanted change, and that we know that as someone who has children in this district, that she was looking out for us as parents and as students. So I just have to voice my concern about that whole thing, because I know several members up here were not in support of backing off of this agenda, but I know that she was. So that's all I'll have to say.
So one, although we don't usually respond directly, we will say that Mrs. Elliott is out tonight due to illness. She had intended to be here. We certainly are not preventing her from being here. However, we do have to continue. We have a quorum, and we do have to continue with our meeting. We will decide what if we are going to vote on things or not, but the meeting will continue. So we actually are going to have a short, a small rearrangement in the agenda, and Mrs. Curtis, because she does have commitments elsewhere, is going to go next. Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm sorry. Do we have more public comment? I'm sorry. Come on up. Yeah.
It's okay. Jessica Saversky. I have an eighth grader and a sixth grader, and my eighth grader just went to Quebec and DC. And I will say, she had an amazing time at both of them. So I would love for them to both stay. As a parent, I know it's a lot of work, and I know it's a lot of things that go into it, but I know that there was no issues, and they all had an amazing time, and like, everybody came back drama-free and grown and just loved everything about it. So if we could keep them for the upcoming classes, that would be unbelievable. So, thank you.
Do we have anyone else who would like to speak in public comment?
Good evening. My name is Chris Light. I have the privilege of serving as the vice president of the American Youth Foundation, which is the organization that runs Camp Maravista, which is where the environmental camp is based out of. Since 2010, so for 15 years, we've had the privilege of working with the Hampton community and working with thousands of Hampton young people to come to Camp Maravista and develop their community and to be immersed in the natural world and to learn more about themselves, their capabilities, and develop their relationships with one another, strengthen their community. The mission of the American Youth Foundation is to create opportunities so that young people can discover the very best within themselves and then to confront the issues that they identify within their communities, to make their communities a stronger place. And when I watched the video of the last school board meeting, I saw this alive and was especially moved by the young people who rose to speak in defense of these experiences. That is everything we aspire to do as an organization and everything we aspire for the young people. We believe fundamentally that it is not our job to tell children what their problems are. We believe in children, and we believe if they have the opportunity to learn more about themselves and what they can do, they will rise to confront the issues in their community. They will work to make their communities a stronger place, and that is what I saw in that video last year. And so, or last week's. What I want to say today, I'm not here to persuade, I'm not here to try to sway. What I am here to say on behalf of the American Youth Foundation and Camp Maravista is that whatever obstacles are confronting your community in bringing young people to these experiences, we want to partner with you. We want to work with you to remove those barriers, to remove those obstacles. We hope to be in continued partnership, continued conversation. Every year, we have taken a look at this program. We have adjusted this program every single year based on the feedback of the Hampton Academy staff, the Hampton Academy students, and our own observations. Our commitment is to make it what you want it to be and how you need it to be to strengthen your community, and we hope to have the opportunity to continue that partnership for the next 15 years. Thank you very much.
Do we have anyone else here for public comment? Seeing none, that was about 10 minutes of our 30 minutes. We will table the rest of the time until the end of the meeting. Mrs. Curtis.
Thank you for letting me go a little early. I'm doing tri-state New Hampshire ASBO. Tonight, we go and start for our training with Maine and Vermont and get all the new laws and up-to-date information. So it takes about two and a half hours to get there, so I appreciate letting me leave a little bit early. I would like today just to go over, it's April, so I have up to the end of May completed and really need to start closing out our accounts and looking at funds and items for this year and next year. So with that said, I got information from the state that indicates what our retainage could be for fiscal year '25 and what we retain for fiscal year '24 and what we lapse back to the taxpayers in '24. I gave that to you in your packet. So for fiscal year '25, we could retain $1,469,488 for emergency use. We have, to date, only retained $508,079. We, at the end of this fiscal year, that retainage goes back to the fund balance. You have to recalculate it and come up with the numbers for how we want to retain that fund for this year. That, just wanted to give you the information, probably won't be coming until the, a guesstimate in the next packet, and then a vote for July or August, depending on when we meet. But with that said, I have been looking at our budget and accounts and would like to discuss some of them and have a vote on how we could spend those funds. So the first one is buildings and grounds and security services. We have $170,867 left in buildings, and that's account 2620s, and then security services, 2660, for $10,600. Those two funds have yet to be spent. One, the security services, they have not set up that program for us, and it hasn't been completed, and we're not going to pay for that item. So those items, I've been talking with the new facilities director, and we have laundry lists of things that have been on the back burner and some things that we've had planned, but they're big items, and we want to make sure that it is okay that we utilize our funds that were set up for facilities for these items. So one is for the center school roof. We have a huge roof repair that needs to be completed. It's leaking. That would cost about $90,000. The neck room at Center School, the heater burst and needs to be replaced. That's $16,285. The Center School has quite a bit of flooring that's hazardous. That's going to cost about $48,000. Marston School repair flooring that is hazardous is about $2,500 that needs repaired. Marston School has, the office, has a mini-split that is in dire need that needs to be repaired, $6,250. The Marston Room exhaust fan failure, we have quite a few of them that need to get completed, that's $6,740. We have to repair the buzzer that's between Marston and the SAU office. If you, somebody is trying to buzz in one section and then trying to get into the other section, it completely goes off. That's $4,876. We have an upgrading for the control panel at the SAU in Marston. It's not functional. That's $60,549. And then Center School, the HVAC program that we've been working on, there is a new SB 209 that now anything over a certain amount of money has to have a project manager involved that's not ours. So if we had any leftover funds, we would like to utilize that for that. And then we have some other small repairs in the Center School. We'd like to have the engineer look at the boiler room, because that boiler is close to failure. So those are the facility items that I was looking at to utilize the funds that's already in facilities for those items. And then we have, if you look at the accounts, $1,200 special education. We are over in that account due to we had some positions that we could not fill and had to utilize professional services for them. And so if you look at related services, that is the other way around. So related services, we have the funds in for tuitions that we didn't have. Special education, we were over because we did not have the teachers to fill those positions, so we had to get professional services. So that kind of offsets each other. And then the rest are just small amounts, but we do have one account that is, has money over, and that's the $1,100, and that's our regular education. And that's a lot due to we had three positions that were not filled, that we could not fill. And then we had 14 teachers leave last year. So when somebody leaves or retires and you rehire, there's a difference usually in pay. So all of that is adjusted in that regular education, and the guesstimate is $176,148 in that balance. So we are requesting if we could take that funds and utilize it for technology to purchase 135 Chromebook devices and licenses with shipping for about $117,325, because they are not in our circuit of refreshes. And next year, we are not sure where the funds, depending on IDEA, if the funds will be there for some of our positions, that we would not purchase technology in that line item and utilize that for salaries. So before tariff and everything else, we'd like to utilize those funds in this budget year for that. So those are the items that we would like to adjust, and then if we could make a decision on that, that would be great.
Page 70 in your books. I think our concern too is we have the HVAC project at Center School, and we know that that is over budget, given the fact that there was a little bit of a lag in when we were able to start it. And so we're recognizing that we're not going to have anything really in our facilities account. So this is what we're trying to do and be proactive and take care of those things that are front burner, things related to safety, things that are related to, you know, exhaust, buzzers, just things that are of high priority. And I think that Tim Harrington has done a really great job helping to prioritize the needs that we can take care of at this time to ensure that our buildings are in good working order. And I think we talked about the technology. We are concerned about that as well. So just trying to be proactive in our planning.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendation to spend down a portion of the estimated fund balance to take care of the items that Mrs. Curtis has listed for us.
I'll second that. Does anybody have any more questions for Mariah before we vote? Okay, all in favor? All right.
And then the only other thing is, this week, they did say that Title I and IDEA, and IDEA preschool, we will definitely get funds for that. It's going to be flat, and I'm not sure exactly how much money we will be getting that, but Title II and Title IV most likely will go away. So those are a few items just to put in the back burner. And so that's, I mean, it's good and it's not, because Title II, IDEA is what we really are hoping to get in Title I, because that's really for our students and special education.
Can I ask a question? When will you probably have an idea about those funds?
I don't know. They were unsure when they told us the update the other day.
I mean, in theory, it's September, right? Isn't that when it rolled, doesn't it roll over? Don't the federal funds roll over in September? That's when their new fiscal year starts?
We can start actually building the grants in July, so we usually have an idea before then, but they did not. They were, had no date for us. But they said that definitely plan on getting funds for IDEA and Title I, but most likely not Title II and Title IV.
Yeah, moving forward.
But I'll find out more information this week, hopefully, and all of the new bills will, we're having information on the bills and a day of information with the lawyer on the bills, so it'll be, I should come back with some good information, hopefully. Saw my grant information in there for you. I will update that again at the end of the month. We're getting close to closing that out, but everything's allocated. I gave you a complete breakdown of all accounts, but if there's anything that you would like me to bring back and go deeper in, I will do that. But it's just near the end of the year and closing up and trying to do cleanup with all accounts and making sure that we are in balance. Oh, one other thing before I do let you guys go. I did show you, I did updated revenue, and the revenues, we completely return back to the taxpayers. These revenues are tuitions that we get in, interest on investments, which is interest from our bank account, cable franchise fee revenues, rentals of facilities, and then CAT aid that we work really hard and try to get all the information on expenses and so that we can get a percentage back. E-rate that we file for and Medicaid reimbursement. So right now, our revenue is $171,195.62. So most likely, there will be more tuition, more interest, and more Medicaid for the next two months in that.
Thank you. So at this point, we are giving back to the taxpayers?
At the least.
At the very least, $171,195.
Yes, at the very least.
Yep. That is it for me, unless anybody has any questions.
Anybody have any more questions for Mrs. Curtis? You are released.
All right. Thank you so much. I appreciate you letting me go early.
No problem.
Much appreciated. Thank you.
Okay, school board member updates. Does anybody, does anybody have anything? Mrs. Shepherd, do you have anything for curriculum? I know some you had been to, but some you had missed, which is fine. Okay.
Okay. And I'll give you an update on the pilot.
That's fine. Molly, is there anything going on with CIP? Okay. Have we made any progress? Has there been any discussions about the Toll Farm Road property?
No.
That's fine. We should at some point touch base on that again, because that is something we need to figure out, but that's, no, no, that's okay. Mrs. O'Neill, would you like to talk at all about legislative stuff we have going on? I mean, it's a lot.
I think everyone's sick of hearing me talk about this. No, I'm just kidding.
I'm not.
No, I think we're just waiting to see what's going to stick at this point. I mean, we all know the issues. It's, you know, the vouchers, the open enrollment, et cetera, and we just have to see what sticks, and then...
Yep. I think we're basically waiting, a lot of stuff is crossed over. We're waiting to see what the budget looks like. We're waiting to see what the governor signs, what she doesn't sign. We shall see. Okay, I don't think we had anything big. I think you guys missed the PTA meeting last week because we had the conflicting meeting. Do you know if we've got anything from the PTA that we need to report on or...
I don't have anything. I know that it was proposed that that be an opportunity for some parents to come and speak about the overnight trips. I don't think there was much attendance for that.
Right.
Not much going on with the recreation department. Did you have something?
I was going to mention Party on the Park.
Yes.
So don't forget that, that big event. I believe it is June 7th, the first Saturday, and just an opportunity for our community to come together. It's in the afternoon, so I know BJ Hickman is going to be there, the food trucks will be there. It looks like it's going to be a great, a great afternoon.
All right, does anybody have anything else under board reports? No? Mr. Robitaille, please join us.
Good evening, everyone. I'm also hoping that after I'm done my report, the math PD committee could speak on their process for the school year.
Yep, no problem.
All right, thank you. So I just wanted to recap a few events that happened before April vacation that were big successes at Center School. We had our celebration of learning on April 23rd, so I just wanted to thank my staff for putting together a nice evening for families to come out and reflect on all the great work that the kids did this year. I also participated in our book fair. It was a lovely evening. We appreciate all the family's support that came out as well. I'd also like to just discuss real quickly, we had our kindergarten information night on April 15th, which was well-attended. We've been holding our K registration meetings since we've gotten back from April vacation, so it's been a wonderful opportunity for our incoming K class to get used to the building, meet with some staff, and have parents have an opportunity to have their questions answered. So it's been nice to see the new crew of kindergartners coming in. Week of wonders coming back to Center School this year, so we have been sending out flyers in my newsletter and standalone flyers that that's going to be returning this year, the week, actually next week, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Each day, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, has been slated for one grade level. So we have grade two on May 27th, grade one on the 28th, and kindergarten on the 29th. We are keeping sign-ups open just a little bit longer, so if parents have any interest in that, there is a signup genius, and that can be found on the Facebook page and via my newsletter. And then the PTA is also supporting us with that, so we appreciate it. Our end-of-the-year ice cream social will be tomorrow from 3:30 to 4:30, so looking forward for families coming out for that event. And we've just been busy with end-of-year benchmarks beginning, so we're looking forward to grabbing all that data, you know, looking at it and making decisions, you know, see what programs were successful this year and how we can hit the ground running in the fall with our... and how we can hit the ground running in the fall with our returning students and also prepping the Marston staff with their new third graders. And then, again, we just have a lot of field trips and special events coming up. So, I'll continue to keep the newsletter updated weekly on Fridays, field trips, concerts, special events. So, it's just busy time at Center School. So, that's it for my report. If any board members had any questions, and then I'd love to welcome up the, some committee members of the K-5 math team.
I think we're good.
Cool.
All right. So, I would like to welcome up from Center School Julie Elwood, Crystal Gimmian, and from Marston School Lindsay O'Reardon and Gretchen Aviles. So, this team has been working over the last couple of school years, obviously some new membership this year with new staff, including myself. But it has been, it's been a very interesting process as we have been looking at a math program to hopefully fit the needs K-5 and offer consistent programming for our students in the district. As a team, we have found that that would be, you know, a very essential piece of moving forward mathematically. We spend a lot of time on literacy. This, you know, a big piece of this group was to make sure math had its fair shake and also just make sure that there's good dialogue and discourse, you know, up the ladder K-5. So, I'm going to turn it over to this team to talk a little bit about our process. We've just recently come to a decision. However, we have not, we have not finalized, you know, establishing a contract with the publisher yet. So, you know, information will go out to the staff once those things are signed up. And then, we'll start talking with families about our new program selection once everything is official. But the team would like to talk to you about their process this evening. Thank you.
Hi, thank you, Mark. As he said, I'm Lindsay O'Reardon. I work at Marston School. I've been there for 14 years. And it's been really humbling just going through this process with our team. And I feel very connected to math and the curriculum after going through this. So, it's been, I appreciate, you know, the opportunity for doing this. So, we will start with just looking at the purpose. Like, we kind of started, what is the purpose of doing this? Why do we have to get this team together? So, the biggest thing was to just ensure that all students can develop a strong foundational math skill aligned with the current standards, research, and instructional best practices. And the most important thing was we wanted continuity across K through 5. So, we could catch those holes or just things that kids were missing. So, our goal in piloting the new program, first thing was increase student achievement. We wanted to do that through high-quality math instruction. We wanted to be able to support all learners within Hampton with materials that provide accessibility, differentiation, and rigor. We wanted to strengthen teacher capacity with embedded professional development, user-friendly resources, and to align to state standards, of course, and the latest evidence-based instructional practices. So, when we first put together this group last year, we just really started diving into what are we doing currently in Hampton K through 5? What does our curriculum look like? We, we put it into a big grid. We, we looked across to see where are their holes? What are we doing well? What do we need to do better? And we kind of just took a deep dive into like just our teacher-created sort of math curriculum. And then, from there, Jaclyn, through demonstrated, demonstrated success, she sort of put together some math program names that she thought might, might align with what we need here in Hampton. And we just started sort of going online, playing around with just their platforms, looking at what they had to offer. And that was kind of just step one. So, then, step two.
So, step two was taking a little bit of a better look at those math programs. We looked at four to start. The first one was Envisions. We looked at Eureka, Bridges in Math, and also illustrative math. And we were able to meet with representatives of those companies as well as other teachers from different schools who were able to use those programs, which was nice for us as a team. And then, as a team, we also asked to have everyday math brought to the table. And we had their representatives come and share out about their program as well.
All right. So, the selection process was very long. We met a handful of times. So, like Julie said, the company either came out or we did a virtual presentation. They sent materials to us. So, we got to see the teacher manuals, the, the, you know, workbooks of the children, assessments. A couple of companies even sent us the actual like manipulatives that the kids would use. So, we got to, you know, deep dive in that. And it was great that we had K-5 because, you know, I, I obviously worked with Lindsay as my grade level person. But then, we got to go cross like the grade levels too to see like, oh, this is where they're coming from. This is where they're going. And then, after each deep dive into the programs, we went through an extensive evaluation. This is just one of the, what, like five pages of things we had to look through. So, some of the things that we were assessing, you know, essentially in these programs was, is it aligned to the standards? What do the assessments look like? Some assessments are like really huge and overbearing for kids, but, you know, we wanted to make sure it was a good balance. Can we take, you know, what they are assessing and, you know, reteach or enrich based on those? We wanted to make sure that the programs were engaging for the kids. And a big one that Crystal will talk more about is the differentiation piece. We wanted to make sure that it would be accessible to all of our learners. And for us teachers, how easy was it to use? You know, there were some programs that it took like an hour for each program just to like teach one, or like each lesson. And that's just too much, you know? We just wanted to make sure like, are we reading a novel before we have to teach one lesson? Or is it something that we can easily just, you know, go with? And then, we put it to a vote. And these were our two top programs. So, we were able to then take Envision and Everyday Math and pilot them. Oh, I guess this is kind of us too. I don't know who's doing this one.
So, at Center, our team in kindergarten, we did, Envisions was addition. And for Everyday Math, we chose to pilot subtraction. First grade did place value and adding, comparing two-digit numbers. For Envisions and Everyday Math, they chose shapes and fractions. And then, in second grade, they looked at measurement and data. And then, for Everyday Math, they chose geometry and arrays. So, each one of those is a unit in that curriculum.
And then, just moving forward, same thing at Marston School. Every grade level just chose a particular unit to focus on depending on where they were in their scope and sequence of the school year. So, third grade, Gretchen and I, we taught area and perimeter for Envisions. And then, we taught fractions for Everyday Math. Fourth grade did fractions with Envisions and decimals for Everyday Math. And then, fifth grade did fractions. Kind of cool, we all did fractions somewhere. I kind of like that we can look at that. And then, area perimeter volume for Everyday Math. So, we had a good range of just a couple different units and just practicing using the manipulatives. And we really got to see, we were the guinea pigs. We told our students, they're the guinea pigs with us. It was really fun to do this with our students. And I think we all, we all had a great time.
Yeah, it's us. It's us again. So, we just wanted to highlight a couple of the things that we liked from each of the programs. For Envisions, the, it was, it was wordy, but it really pushed our students to think. A lot of our homegrown lessons that we use are just like, let me teach this. You try it out. Now, you're on your own, which is great in itself. But like, you know, sometimes we forget to really push them, which, you know, comes out in SAS testing for us, not so much for them. But K3, or K2 also noticed that it really pushed their, the students to think. It asked them to apply math skills in real-life situations, which was awesome because they're, obviously, we're always teaching them like, you have to know this. Like, it seems weird, but yes, you're going to use this when you're a grown-up. So, that was embedded into that program. It had cute little videos that the kids could see each grade level, you know, changed to, you know, meet the, you know, excitement of each grade. So, that was cute. And then, it was easy for us to prep the lesson. And then, Everyday Math.
Some positives for Everyday Math. Differentiation was there. We felt like we could challenge a student. We felt like we could, you know, reteach. There was a lot there that we could use. The lessons flowed beautifully, like, you know, being someone that was piloting, but also teaching all the other subjects. This was something that I felt flowed right into my classroom and didn't feel like it was a pilot, like we were just trying something randomly. It felt really good. It had great materials. The student, student workbooks had a lot of space for the students to do work. As a young, you know, elementary teacher, like that's what we want. We want them to draw out what they're doing, show, you know, show your work, prove it. Again, going into that workbook. And then, there were tons of games, which my students absolutely loved. And they could do them in person with the manipulatives. And there was a lot of online games as well that they really, really took to. So, it was great.
Okay. I piloted some intervention pieces, which were really important to the team. We want that common language as we talked across the schools, but also within groupings of Tier 2 and Tier 3. So, we did the Envision. Some highlights where they had a diagnostic placement that you were able to keep going until the students, you know, tested out of that. And then, you would bounce back to the one they tested at and you were able to use. They had a lot of worksheets. And again, it was a bit wordy, but it was nice to do in a small group for those kinds of things. We also had access to the full pilot of Envision. So, I was able to go into the classrooms and see what they were doing. And then, because we were piloting, I wanted to put my hands on the Tier 1 lessons too. So, for the kids that maybe needed some more fact practice, I was able to access that and pull lessons maybe from the beginning of the year that they might have, if we were essentially doing it in class, I could have gone back to some lessons and repeated. For the kids that were piloting it in class, it was nice for them because they were used to the language. They were used to how I was presenting it. And we could just, I felt that if we went that way, we could always use the general ed lessons with the intervention piece because they did a lot of the common language, the common, the way they presented their materials. Everyday Math had a whole separate piece that, it's actually called Number Worlds, and it's a whole Tier 2 intervention, but it aligns with Everyday Math. So, the way they present the materials, the language, again, all was familiar to students, what they're seeing in their core classroom. But then, when they came to me, like, for example, like number lines, some teachers might call them number pass, but they all, they would be used to the same language, which was really helpful because when we take Tier 2, Tier 3, they come from different classrooms. So, sometimes it's like you're spending your time going over what I'm talking about. But if they are used to the same language and the same tools, it really makes our time more successful in class. Number Worlds was very colorful, engaging. It also became with its own notebooks that you do at the end of each lesson. And it's just a quick check-in. Lots of games, the lessons were lots of games. And then, they repeated themselves and they got more rigorous as they went on. And it was very easy to follow for me and for the kids. And they were really excited, the kids that were piloting in their own class, to kind of see it come back to us. And that is it from us.
Yes.
So, I don't know if the board has any questions. This is pretty fresh. Obviously, like I said, we're still, you know, the, the committee did make a recommendation that is now being presented to the SAU and, you know, making sure that we can establish the contract that we're hoping to with the publisher of one of these programs. So, I'd love to, I would love to come back. I don't have to, you guys don't have to come back, but just talk to you in June about how we finalize things and hopefully wrap things up and planning future professional development to get our staff ready for the fall of '25, '26. But if the board had any questions for the process, I'm sure the teachers would be happy to ask.
How many, because I know, I kind of know the answer, but I think people might want to know, how many teachers were involved with the pilot? Because I think it's good for people to realize that although there were only four people standing in front of you tonight, there were many people involved. So, how many were involved?
I think it was like 15 or 16.
Yeah, we had two from each grade level except for third, but three from each grade level, sped teachers, the math, the math interventionists, principal, yeah, two administrators. So, it was, it was a big group.
Yeah.
It was.
I think it was over 15.
Yeah, it was a good group. And the one thing that I was noticing during my walkthroughs is I was talking to students about it. And students had real strong opinions about the program they preferred, which I thought was very interesting to hear the students talk about which one they liked and why. So, very interesting to hear even from the students during the pilot. So, I don't know if that weighed into it, but they certainly did have an opinion. So.
Well, it matched ours.
Well, no, I appreciate that. And I, I thank you. I know it's, it's a huge, it's a huge decision. And it's one that we lived with for a while. So, I do appreciate your work on it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Tina.
Thanks.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, it's very cute.
All right, Mr. Sadler.
Hello, everybody. All right. May, May and June, here we go. So, right now, we've completed tomorrow SAS testing, except for a few makeups. So, that feels pretty good. Our students are probably relieved to have that behind them and look forward to some of the more memorable things going on this year. Same kind of thing Mr. Robitaille said, if caring adults just check our Facebook and website and pay attention to those Sunday calls and all the texts. And I know sometimes it feels like a lot of emails, but they're important emails. And there is stuff in there that you'll want to see. There's a lot of upcoming things with field trips and end-of-year celebrations that you're going to want to know about in advance. For example, this Friday, we're going to have our annual Memorial Day Assembly. We've invited in the post legion troop and Commander Burke Bennett, and then, any local or area. I mean, you don't even have to live in Hampton, just veterans. We're looking forward to having anyone come and, and celebrate with us. It's less of a celebration, more of a remembrance and honor at, at Memorial Day. But it's the same kind of feel we have at Veterans Day. It's just great to connect with the community. And then, for caring adults who are our incoming third graders, we have our 2-3 info night on May 28th. We've just had to adjust our start time a little bit. It's going to be 6:15 instead of 6:00. But we're going to send some communications over to Center School to get out to our second-grade families and just let them know about that. But otherwise, you know, it's just a lot of really great stuff going on, a lot of really exciting learning events happening within the building, you know, author visits and guest speakers coming up here at the end of the year. So, we're really looking forward to it. All right. Have a fantastic night.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Dr. Campbell.
All right, everyone. All right. So, wrapping up the school year. We had a great last month. We want to congratulate our eighth graders for a third place in Tucker Mountain Challenge Maple Syrup Contest. Excellent. We got a vapor, vapor evaporator? Something like that. So, coming in where, so, we're hoping to upgrade our maple syrup production for next year. So, it's pretty, pretty amazing that we got third place for the, the methods in which they're using. We had Portsmouth Naval Shipyard in a couple, a couple weeks ago to build sea perches, which are underwater robotics. All the seventh graders participated where they were in hands-on. They were soldering, drilling, cutting, and working as a team to create underwater robots that were designed and developed by, at MIT. So, it was pretty great. In the coming weeks, we're going to have them racing. So, we're going to bring Portsmouth Naval Shipyard back. We'll have a big setup. I believe we're doing it on the, the basketball field. And then, we'll be able to test them. We want to be, our Bikes for Books began. We want to thank Hampton Masons for their donation of two bicycles. Two sixth graders can earn raffle tickets for every book they read until June 16th. And then, they can earn them. On May 28th, we are going to have a fifth, sixth grade parent info night. We have moved our time to 5 o'clock so that we can accommodate the info night over at Marston. Also, on May 28th, we will have another Coffee and Conversation here at the Community Room, moved it to 9 o'clock so that people who have drop-offs over at Marston can attend. We had, we had one last month. It was great. This Friday, we will have our Memorial Day Assembly. And as we wrap it up, we have our Scholastic Book Fair in the library coming June 2nd. Seventh grade has got a whole bunch of field trips coming up. Our field day will be June 11th with a rain day on June 10th. And yeah, final assembly will be on the 16th, 6:00 p.m. With that, do we have any questions?
I'd just like to ask if, I noticed in each one of your reports that there's been zero substantiated bullying reports. These reports are done weeks in advance of us receiving them. And I'd just like to ask that if, like, in the timeframe between when we, when these are done and when you come to us, if there are any that you let us know
Absolutely.
about that, when, when you come to us, okay?
Yep, perfect. Hundred percent.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Does anybody have any questions for now? Okay, we will see you back up in a few minutes.
Okay.
Dr. DeSylvan Napton?
Good evening. So, you do have my report. And our numbers in special ed, they keep ticking upward. We are at 21.5% now for the district with 202 identified students in the district. We are working through staffing for next year. And you've been approving the people that have been contracted this year. We are nearly there. If anyone's listening, we are still looking for a school psychologist, a full-time position at the Hampton Academy. In the meantime, we will move forward with a contracting company. We'll sign on with them right now. And then, there'll be a, you know, get out clause. If we do find our own school psychologist, we can know, is a year old, and the Children's Museum of Dover, and we just had a great time. It was really phenomenal. That will be an annual event moving forward. At Dr. Costa's request, we have a group of stakeholders that have pulled together before my exit to do a special education audit of our policies, procedures, staffing, just kind of looking at everything. We've had some really great meetings with the, all the right people around the table, and we are really kind of finalizing systems and setting up, you know, kind of looking at what's been there, looking ahead to see what we need or could do differently, and we are going to be wrapping that up by the end of the school year. That's been going really well. And then, in the grant world, the Consolidated Grant is a new system that the state put in last year, and they had had a due date of June 1, they've since moved that to July 1, but that's in essence, it's a snapshot of all, putting in all the information for all of the grants. It's kind of odd because we don't really know what's going to happen with Title II and IV. Like, you heard, we do know what I D E A will be, so I will just write that, including everything, and then if it comes, we'll use it, if it doesn't, and I'll just flat-fund everything. And we have a stakeholder group that helps us decide on how to spend our grant funds, and that's part of our PD committee, so they've already given me the ideas, and I'll get that all in on time. Other than that, do you have any questions?
I have a number question. So, we are up net 13 students in the special ed program since the beginning of the year. I remember talking about the case managers at the middle school trying to keep their cases to 14 or 15, I believe.
We like to keep it under 20.
And I just, it was actually staffing that I was sort of wondering about. I mean, I understand that that is not all in one grade, that it is spread out across the grades, but I'm wondering about staffing for case managers for next year and if we're going to have enough.
I have looked at everything, and I meet with the, you know, principals weekly, and I meet with the staff, and Dr. Costa and I, and of course, at budget time, we review everything, and we look at the, you know, the projected numbers. At this time, I can confidently say that with the numbers we have now, we will have, and the new hires of the new case managers throughout the district, we will have, our caseloads will be under 20 in all of the buildings, and much closer to 15 for everybody. So we really will be staffed for the teaching staff quite well, and we're also looking at the par educators, and how many we have in each building, what we're using them all for, and we're looking at their role, and having some professional development around that, too.
And that was the audit that you were talking about, right?
Yeah, that's the audit.
So we'll hear more about that next month? Perfect. All right. Does anybody have any other questions for Dr. DeSylvan Napton? Nope.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Smith.
Hello. Thank you all for supporting the movement of those funds, because it will really help us out with trying to procure some technology in advance of next year with who knows what's happening. Other than that, you have my board port in front of you, I don't have too much to add. We've been looking a lot at subscriptions and working with administration at each of the buildings to identify any areas where we might be able to trim subscriptions that aren't really being utilized to try and save some money for the coming year. We've also been working with the facilities department on starting to set up their online ticketing platform, just like we use for tracking all of our inventory and everything like that in technology. So that's going pretty well. And then, other than that, we're just really looking ahead to where we can pause stuff for the summer so that we can start working on things for the rollover for next year. So, with that, any questions?
I think we're good.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Mr., yep, there's Mr. Harrington, hiding in the back. Come on down.
Good evening, all. Just wanted to touch base about Center School HVAC, give you a little update on that. We had a meeting today with the management team over there, a lot of people, it was about 12 people from one company. But just talk about them, both timeline, what they're looking at, when they're going to be able to start, where they're going to start, floor, kind of top-down, because we still have to get in there and do what we do in those areas, so. By the sounds of it, it's a good team, so it should go pretty well. And quick, I hope, fully, yeah, fingers crossed. And I wanted to give an update on the Marston School NECC, we've had the ball rolling on that. Furniture has been ordered, had conversations with Gauge Builders, who built the one over at Center School. I've had conversations with Whites Welding to get them on board. I'm going to have them do a walkthrough, just to double-check at Center School, and then we'll bring them over to Marston. And the boards for the things have been ordered also. It's a little different configuration than over at Center School, so, but it should be pretty straightforward, I hope, another one of those. Other than that, we had April break, we did quite a few things, April break, a lot of PMs on HVAC equipment, but nothing major came up, small things here and there. We did some tile work here at Hampton Academy, some of the tiles were popping up at the gym entrance, couple doorways, we had that all repaired. Incident IQ, we've been having meetings about that every week, another one tomorrow, to get, I went through and did a list of assets in the building to get those into there, it'll be great down the road, honestly, for any type of reports that we need, I'll be able to pull up when stuff, when we put stuff in, when stuff was repaired, I'll be able to keep track of all that type of stuff, so that should be awesome, actually. And that's it for me. Any questions, or?
How are we doing on custodial staffing?
It's a great question.
Do you need to start asking?
Yeah, no. So, we just had somebody give their notice, but I do have a couple applications that came in, so I'm going to hopefully set those up and start talking to some people fairly soon. And I've been possibly pilfering some people that worked for me in Stratum over the summertime.
Good point. Nice.
So, a couple college kids, so just for summertime help, just trying to get a feel of what we're going to need at Center and Marston. Here is pretty straightforward, there's not a lot of, no stripping of the floors or anything like that, so it's more center. And we're going to be moving some people also. Had somebody today request if they could go back to nights instead of daytime, so I'll be shifting some people there, too, so. But I think a couple people, hopefully. We could use another one here, full-timer here, so, yeah, we'll be all right, I think.
Sounds good.
Good.
Good report.
Andrea?
All right. Mrs. Bor, please join us.
So, food service, we're just busy, 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 field trips, field days, barbecues, end-of-year stuff. We had some generous donations last month that Dr. Costa will go through in her report, very generous donations, thank you. And I would love to just remind folks, if your student owes lunch money, please send in a payment. We take cash, check, you can pay by credit card at myschoolbucks.com. That's it, because the end-of-year comes quick, so please send in the money.
How are we doing on our student lunch day?
We are, district-wide, $3,250.
Okay.
If you want, I could break it down, but, and that's for 109 students.
Okay.
So, we're, and Emily Fixler, I'm still working with her, she's taking the top half, $50 and above, I'm taking the bottom half, $50 below, $50, so we're still working together.
Did you meet with Hannafords recently, too, to talk about their program?
We were, had a date set up for yesterday, and Emily Fixler was ill, so we did reschedule for Thursday, not this Thursday, I think next Thursday at 11 o'clock with Hannaford, so if they could help with donations, and we'll set something up. So we do have a meeting next week.
That's great.
That's it.
Anybody else have any questions about lunches? No?
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
All right, Dr. Costa?
I'll go through my report, and then we'll do donations. We have quite a few donations. I think the principals talked about it, but we did celebrate our staff the week of May 9th when we came back from the April break, and it was Nurses' Day as well on that Wednesday, May 7th. Just an opportunity for all of us to recognize our teaching staff and to honor them. In fact, the PTA was more than generous, as well as I know that the principals do a number of things, and we, as an SAU, provided bagels to the staff each day, so it was good, it was good to be able to do that and to recognize them. You noticed in my report that there's some events that we were busy, busy and involved with, including the Toast to the Coast event that we assist the Chamber of Commerce at, that we enjoy doing that. Myself, Susan Antico, we do our small part, but it's just a way to get out there and to be part of the community and do these events. The other thing I want to highlight is we, yesterday, we had a wonderful ELL event here at, right here in this space, from 4:30 to 6:00, it was well-attended, and people really seemed to enjoy that opportunity to get together with the families for all of our students, and it was a wonderful time. We are wrapping up some of our district committees, setting goals for next year, I'll talk a little bit about that in just a bit, as we think about our strategic plan and thinking about input. I know one of the things I heard was, how can we provide input? So I want, I'll talk about that, too. I want to give people an opportunity to be a part of strategic planning. We do invite people in, I think sometimes it comes at the time of the year where we're probably all very busy, but just by virtue of setting goals, it does happen over the summer, and then in August, September, so I'll talk about that in just a minute. We also want to remind you that we sent out a feedback survey on May 9th with my newsletter to just ask for your input, what's going well, what do you want to see change, other feedback that we should be thinking about. We do this annually, just to hear from everyone. I am always curious to know what it is that we need to be working on, and that helps us as a leadership team in the summer to look at that feedback and to think about, how can we take that, use it, and to elevate your voices. So, just a reminder to complete those, you have until June, we leave it open, it's not long, it's three questions, and we hope to hear from folks that have something to share with us. Looking at our second goal, which is specifically related to physical and emotional safety, we talk a little bit about the HVAC system that's going on at Center School that I know our facilities manager, Tim Harrington, spoke about, just that Turnstone Corporation was awarded the bid, and that we are anxious to begin that in June. We're gearing up right now with all of the paperwork that needs to be put in place to ensure that we're ready to go. We participated in the National Walk By to School Day on May 7th, lots of people that participated. We're glad that we were able to get that day in, it was between the raindrops, it wound up being a pretty nice morning, so we'll take it, given the rainy, the rainy spring we've had. The wellness team did meet on May 8th to talk about some of our initiatives, just ensuring the health and wellness of our staff, which is part of our insurance program that we are required to do. On June 4th, during our release day, our mental health team will participate in training from the Anya Center, which is grieving children and families out of Manchester. We are happy to partner with this program, which is out of Manchester. There will be a backpack program that all of our mental health team includes our counselors, our psychologists that will participate in, and just another resource for us in the area that we can tap into. And then, on June 7th, a number of administrators and first responders, myself included, will participate in a reunification course offered by Homeland Security in Emergency Management, which will take place in the Pelham School District, 9 to 5, we're looking forward to that. And continuing on into curricula, professional practice, just to let you know that over the spring break in April, I did review all renewals for licensers and was able to recertify all of our staff, so we were able to take care of that. So staff is in the process of paying for those renewals and making sure their certification is on par with the state. It was great to see the abundance of hours. Our staff is required to have at least 75 hours, 30 in their endorsement areas, additional 45, so 75, 30 for every endorsement areas, but staff had hundreds of hours, and I think, again, it speaks to the level of commitment and dedication that our staff has to their professional professions. We know that extended year will take place from July 1st to the 31st, Monday through Thursday, that will be coming soon. We talked about our math pilot, appreciate all the work that was done on that. We know that our students in grades three through eight are participating in our New Hampshire SAS assessments. Today, I had the opportunity to participate in the Data Studio training that was offered by the Department of Ed in Exeter, New Hampshire. So, Data Studio will replace Performance Pathways or Performance Plus, which was the data storing house for New Hampshire. It is now being replaced by Data Studio, so more information is coming from them, but today we had a nice introduction, and it was very similar to Performance Pathways, just another way to look at data and to ensure that we are focusing on closing those achievement gaps and being data-driven with our decision-making, but also with our instructional practices. So, excited about that, and all of our staff will have the opportunity to tap into that through the New Hampshire DOE single sign-in, so it's pretty user-friendly. So I was excited to see that. And then, of course, in addition to that, students will be participating in the STAR assessments, which is another assessment that we give as a benchmark, we give that in the fall, we do that in the spring, and then for any students we're concerned about, we do the mid-years as well, just to progress-monitor all of our students and ensure they're growing as we want them to grow. Our, obviously, Marston School is preparing for the NECC program, which we are excited to see next year at Marston. This allows our students to stay in their home district. Those students that are coming up from Center School will be able to stay in their home district. This is a win for our kids, this is a win for our community and our district, and we're excited to see the expansion of the NECC program next year at Marston School. You know that we have a number of step-up days and final assemblies, so please, please make sure you're looking for those weekly newsletters or those weekly calls from your building principals that will give you the most up-to-date and accurate information. We are obviously very busy with hiring, scheduling end-of-year summatives, and exit interviews with staff, and really preparing for the end of the school year. So, we are excited for the next few weeks. It is a time to bring closure to our students and to ensure that every child ends the year on a high note, and being intentional about what that means. So, I can go through my goals if you'd like.
You want to do that now?
Yeah, why don't I do that real quickly?
Sure, that's fine.
So, the goals that we have come up with, and I know that this came as a question, like, where do the goals come from, how do we decide on those goals, what is it that the district is working on? And I can tell you that probably about four or five years ago, there was a committee that got together that worked under the direction of Dr. Ayers and Dr. Greenberg, who are two former superintendents, that took the district through what we call a visioning process, and they met with a number of focus groups to talk about what it is that stakeholders wanted to see. So what is it that was working, what is it that wasn't working? And from that, a vision was developed, a mission was developed, values were looked at, and of course, a motto came to be. And then there were focal areas that came out of that work. So the four goal areas that came out of the work were communication, physical and emotional safety, professional practice, which is curriculum, instruction, and assessment, and then equity as well came out of that work. And so, each year- So what is it that was working? What is it that wasn't working? And from that, a vision was developed, a mission was developed, values were looked at, and of course, a motto came to be. And then there were focal areas that came out of that work. So the four goal areas that came out of the work were communication, physical and emotional safety, professional practice, which is curriculum, instruction, and assessment, and then equity as well came out of that work. And so each year, we have looked at those goal areas and we've talked about what it is that we want to do as a district to ensure that we're continuing to move the district in the right way, in the right areas, obviously taking into consideration what the needs are of the community. We do this with your feedback. We do this twice. We actually look at this at our leadership retreat. But then again, in August, September, we invite stakeholders in to look at where we are, to determine where we want to go next. So we're trying to be very mindful of what are the goals? What do we want to do? And it was, you know, a former school board member who would say to me, but what's new? But what's new? But what's new? And I appreciated that comment because it's true. How are we going to make things different? How do we make things better? How do we make things change? So for example, under the first goal, which is around communication, it was to create and maintain open dialogue and active listening with all stakeholders. How specifically can we do that? And we want to improve parental support for learning, but how are we doing that? And are we doing it in a way that is meeting your needs? And if we're not, then we really want to hear from you. Like if there's something that you could suggest, we do want to hear from it. So one of the things that we've done is, this year, is we developed the HATCH, which Dr. DeSilva Napton talked about, which was the, the, the early childhood program for children that we have started this year that has really taken flight. We also, with, with feedback from the community, we now have a way to have our families access our written communication in their home language through Reach My Teach. So that's new this year. So Reach My Teach is new this year. One of the other things that came to our attention as well is that the program that the nurses were using, they were concerned that it was not HIPAA compliant and that they wanted to be in alignment with Winnicott High School. So we implemented the SNAP program, which is a way for recording and reporting student incidences. Under expanded partnerships, one of the things that we heard was we needed to, we wanted to have more pathways for our educators or our paras to become certified. So we developed a partnership with the National Collaborative for Digital Equity. And we developed an apprentice program for those paraeducators to become licensed educators through a career pathway, getting their associates, their bachelors, or their master's degree. So we partnered with the National Collaborative for Digital Equity. And we have many paras right now, at least twelve, that are enrolled in these programs, which could be a way for them to get their degree. And then hopefully, those expand the pool of candidates, specifically in special education. We also partnered with the Cook Center this year. We know that the mental health of students has been something that's been on this board's mind and on the community's mind as it relates to bullying, as it relates to suicide prevention. So we partnered with the Cook Center to provide our families with another resource that they could use to, to help them. So the Cook Center is new, new this year. We also partnered with C and CESP. Those are our unions to pass contracts this year. And we were able to pass a three- and a four-year contract. We also partnered with the Lane Library for the first time on a book study of Anxious Generation, which was a huge success, where we had anywhere from thirty to forty-five participants over four sessions. We also are working with Friends of Añe for our, for grieving families. That's another partnership that we have encouraged or that we have started this year, which is a way to look at grieving families. One of the things that we're always looking at is how do we address the changes in laws? This is something that will be upon us, especially with what's going on with the Legislative Committee. As Candace alluded to, we do anticipate there will be changes in laws. That might mean we'll have open enrollment. It might mean there'll be vouchers. There might be just a number of things. So how do we ensure that we're staying on top of that? We continue to work with the New Hampshire School Boards Association to ensure that we're getting those updates. We are monitoring those and we are updating our practices to reflect those changes. We update our policies to reflect those laws. We obviously are keeping our leadership apprised of those laws. And finally, we are sharing them out with the staff. So the third goal is around physical and emotional safety. We continue to implement responsive classroom, which is probably our oldest-running initiative. It's about twenty-three, twenty-two years old. And, and that's our way in terms of making sure that children feel included, making sure that learning is joyful, and responding to the needs of our students. We know that the advisory is something that the middle school continues to work on, to refine. We also are, looked at behavior response training with Hampton Academy. I know they've worked with some outside consultants this year, as well as attending the NELMS Conference as well. We are also working with the Department of Ed to look at those multi-tiered systems of support as it relates to behavior. That will be an ongoing goal. Physical safety is always a priority, given the world in which we live with. We know that we were pleased that we finally were able to complete the SAU ninety security door. We're thrilled with that. The sign is up. It is done. It took a while, but it was, it was well worth it and we're really pleased with that. We are trying to improve the indoor air quality at Center School in Marsden with the Warren article. And we continue to work with our officials on that. As I mentioned, that June seventh, we will be going to the reunification training in Pelham, New Hampshire, as our way of ensuring the physical safety of our students. We talked about the resources, including the Cook Center. We added a preschool playground to Center School. We cut the ribbon of that in October. We also have a comfort dog, Gus, who is just a wonderful community member, not just at the Hampton Academy, but he does visit many, many, many areas, including the senior center, but just a welcome addition in the HATCH program. And then, of course, our mental health team continues to look at anti-bullying programs and suicide prevention strategies, which will always be front and central, just based on policies and the world we, in which we live in. And then, of course, internet safety is important to us as well. And we talked a little bit about Anxious Generation. Moving on to curriculum and professional practice, considering our response to intervention and how do we look at data? And how do grade-level teams analyze that data, recommend support using a tiered system? How do we utilize our staff to expand our team? With an emphasis on how do we differentiate instruction? How do we personalize learning? In writing, we're obviously concerned with what's going on with ChatGPT. This is something that has entered our world. We want to make sure that we are being mindful of that as well. Mathematics, we are looking specifically at the piloting of that program, but also how do we align our methods, materials? How are we identifying gaps in our learning? How do we ensure that our instruction is differentiated to meet the needs of our students? In social studies, due to House Bill eleven sixty, we had to ensure that we had assessments that aligned with our social studies curriculum, and we were able to do that as well. So again, responding to those changes in laws that mean a change in our practice. Title nine and Title six, there has been changes in those laws as well, ensuring that we're staying on top of those laws, ensuring that our staff has had the training to ensure we're upholding those laws. That's important to us. And then, of course, we talked a little bit about this earlier, but expanding the, these dorm room or the NEC program at Marsden School. And that's just, like I said, a win for all of us. And then you'll notice that underneath my goals, you have Center Schools, Marsden Schools, and Hampton Academy, which align nicely with these goals. So with that said, the next step would be during our retreat to look at those goals and to figure out, how are we doing? What does, what does the data show? What does the, what are those New Hampshire SAS tests reveals? What does the STAR assessments reveal? Where are the strengths? Where are the opportunities? And what do we need to do differently to ensure that we're meeting the needs of our students? And then, of course, in August, September, we will open this up for all stakeholders who are interested to come and to have those conversations, to tell us what they think. If there's something that we're missing, we want to hear. What is it that you would like to see us doing? And taking that into account as we plan for the year.
So is this, are these, I think I know the answer, but just in case other people don't know the answer. Are these district goals posted on the website?
Yes.
They are. These are posted on the website for all to look at. And the other thing is, I believe I heard you say earlier that you had sent out a, maybe a survey or three questions.
I did.
Okay. So again, under communication, which is the first of the goals here, it appears to me that we probably have to find some strategies to improve dialogue, especially with parents of, of our middle school students. And maybe the survey questions that you sent out will help us get some suggestions to put into these district goals. And again, in August and September, now that we've heard from people here, we want to make sure that the people specifically that have spoken up, that we reach out to those people specifically and make sure that those stakeholders, reach out to those specific stakeholders and let them know that this is the time for you to come and speak and help us make sure that we have your input into these goals and that we have done what you are asking us to do. And so that's what I wanted to make sure we clarify that.
Thank you for doing that. I know that the schools offer the coffee chats and I, I wonder if those are offered at a time that meets people's needs. I wonder if there's something else we should be considering. I wonder if that's something, if there's something I should be doing. The other thing I would love to know is, this is the first year we've done the Cook Center. I'm very curious as to the feedback on that. Was it helpful? Did people access it? I will try to collect data from the Cook Center to see, did people find the calendar of events? Was it helpful? Was it not helpful? This is something that, that SAU twenty-one has reached out to me about. And they are, they are willing to partner with us on a piece of this. It would be the coaching, but it would not be for the calendar of events. So they do not offer this calendar of events that you all get from, from us, which basically it allows you to, you know, ask a therapist live. It allows you to participate in that calendar of events. But I don't, I'm just curious. I would love to know if anyone has feedback on, on that because that would really determine which way we go. So it's, you know, it is a cost factor, so we need to know if it's valuable, if it's not valuable. Would love to hear people's thoughts on that as well.
And again, if people aren't sure what Dr. Costa's talking about, I don't know if you can see it from where you're sitting, but these are the papers and I don't know if these-
It is on the, it's also on the website, under Wellness.
Also on the website.
Yep.
And I would highly encourage you, if you have not looked at them, to make sure you do look at them. These are all free webinars and call-ins-
Yep.
-for, you know, different therapists.
Yep.
I don't know, are these given out during, like, PTA meetings and things like that? Perhaps this is another venue where we can get these out to parents. Maybe we're not doing enough of getting these out through PTA. And maybe we need to do more of that.
Yeah. Yeah, if there's a better way of, of getting them out, obviously, you know, I'm trying to be mindful of how much do I put in your inbox? I think last year, I was, I was doing weekly newsletters and that's never an issue for me. I'm happy to do a weekly newsletter, but one of the pieces, some of the feedback I heard, and I heard it from multiple people, was the letters are redundant. It's hard to keep track of your letters, the principal's letters, and everything else. So I went down to once a month this year, but I would love to hear your feedback if you have thoughts about that. I'm not trying to flood your inbox with, you know, paper you don't want or information, so would love to hear the feedback on that as well. If I were doing like a weekly newsletter, I could attach it every, you know, every month or I could attach it every week, whatever people want. But I'm just trying to be mindful of, you know, how much information do you want coming in your inbox? I get it. It's, it can be, it can be a lot.
It is a lot. And it's, you know, it's, it's good that our aim is to improve communication. And Andrea, I really appreciate you taking a minute to sort of point out exactly where some of this stuff can be found, because I don't know, to be honest, as a parent. I'm kind of speaking more as a parent from this perspective. What's a little bit challenging is there's a lot of different places. We have to go for information. And like speaking as someone who has kids at three different tiers of, of school level, that gets challenging. If there's a way we can take a look at maybe centralizing all of this information so it can be found in one spot as opposed to, you know, I have to log into this program to get that information. I have to look for email for this. I have to, you know, reach out by text or phone for this. It, it does get a little challenging. I would just add on the, your question about the coffee chat. I think it's amazing that our school offers that. And I think it's a really important dialogue that a lot of people would like to participate in. The challenge we have in this community is, I think, a high number of our families are two-working parent households. I know for myself, I can't get there at that time. I would love to, but I can't. And hopefully, with technology being what it is and the resources we have, we can find another way to allow parents who can't physically be there for those coffee chats to be able to engage.
Yeah, I mean, and I would love to hear, is there a better time? You know, if coffee chats don't work, like, you know, is it, I don't know, five o'clock, six o'clock, seven o'clock? What is the time? I know the PTA has really struggled with this. They too, they've gone to, from seven o'clock meetings to five o'clock meetings. You know, they've done six o'clock meetings. I think we've, we've seen the gamut, right? And they're just not sure what, what's the magic time, right? What is the magic time? I'd love to hear what that is. I think, you know, I think I kind of joke about it. I'm, I'm really open to do what meets the needs of people. We just need to know what that is.
Just to quickly follow up, I think the challenge, coming off of, I was part of the PTA back when we used to meet at those later times, and that was great for parent engagement, but then it wasn't always fair to the principals and the teachers. Because now we're asking some of them who don't live in Hampton to stick around for a long period of time. And I know that that's hard.
Yep.
So it's, I think we maybe need to leverage technology in a way to bring these two voices together, because it's, it's not fair to ask our, you know, our administrators to stick around till six o'clock. But in reality, for most of us parents, that's, that's how late it is before we're free, if we're free, you know, given sports and all that, so.
Yeah. I, I think if it were done once a month, right? I think we just, it's about what's meaningful and what's manif- what's meaningful and what's manageable. And that's what I, that's always my two key, two key things, right? So I think it's, I think it just depends. I think if it's really that important, I think it needs to be a priority.
Yep.
And I, I think the important piece that I'm hearing is like a good time and wanting feedback, but I think we have such a diverse community of people in different professions. There are people, no one's ever gonna, there's not one time that's gonna be perfect for everybody. I think it's important to keep that in mind, like our perspective of the world is not the perspective. But I didn't realize that between the schools, there was one place you have to log in for info and then another only sends an email. I was always under the impression that it was all sent through email. Do we have different practices between schools?
Well, I mean, we have Alma, right?
Yeah.
And I know some parents don't use Alma, I have heard. I think certainly, I'm sorry, I'm not the right person to speak to this because I don't work in the schools, but I know some teachers send emails. I'm guessing some send messages through Alma? Is that?
Reach My Teach.
Reach My Teach. Oh, that's right. Reach My Teach.
Google Classroom.
And, and Google Classroom.
Some teachers post there. It's just not entirely consistent. Even, even in the business, it's not obviously-
But our administrators are all following the same practices, right? As far as getting info out between schools?
I think so. I think all three schools send out emails.
Right? Emails?
Yes.
Yeah.
With like newsletters that-
They're attached to it.
Yeah.
Links for everything that we've talked about today.
Okay. So like the high-level stuff is all being sent in the same place?
But it does, if you've got more than one kid.
Yeah.
Right?
Absolutely.
And you've got, especially once you hit the middle school, right? So you're dealing with multiple teachers and teams and all of that. It's, that's challenging. And I don't, I don't know what the exact answer is for that, but we could work on streamlining it. Sure, absolutely.
Yeah. I can tell you the intentions are there. And so if we're missing the mark, we need to know how to hit it.
I think the intention, yeah, absolutely. I think all, maybe this is what you were trying to get to, Molly, too, is having a landing spot where, yeah, it's going out by email and that's great, but if you miss it because your inbox is flooded.
Right.
You know you can go to this one spot and there's Center, Marsden, and Academies. Newsletters are all right there that week.
I do have a number of donations. Should we do those next?
Sure.
All right. Let's see. I have- So we're gonna start with Center School and it's the one that I hand carried. They got a gift from the PTA, which we're very grateful for, for $14,211 for enrichment. So I'd like permission to accept that one. And a big thank you to the PTA.
That's amazing. Jo, I have a motion to accept. Sorry, I'm nearby. Sorry, Candace.
Motion to accept.
Okay. Do I have a second? Okay. All in favor? And a huge thank you to the PTA for that.
Thank you. I also have a check for $3,000 from the Sandra J. Blake Trust to Hampton Academy as well as an $81.70 check from Box Tops for education.
Can I just ask, the one from the trust, was that intended for a specific purpose or is it just a general donation to the school?
It was a general donation to the school. In fact, I received that probably, well, you can see, it was dated April 28. We think it came out of somebody's estate.
Okay.
So maybe a former student, we thought, which was again, a lovely donation.
Okay.
Yeah. Really very nice. Yep.
Awesome. All right. Do I have a motion to accept? Molly? Okay, thank you. Andrea has a second. All in favor? Okay.
And then Mary Borg had a number of donations. I'm gonna start with Hunger Walk from the First Congregational Church of Hampton for $1,923.15. Again, a wonderful generous donation from First Congregational Church to the Hampton School District Food Service Program, as well as Jackie Kennedy, $100 donation, big thanks to her, and $1,000 from the Rotary Club, which is their second donation for $1,000. So big thank yous to all of those folks that are donating to our food service program.
That's awesome. I'll move to accept those. Do I have a second? Okay, all in favor? Okay, and I think we missed Box Tops.
We'd-
It's, it's under the, oh, I did it.
I did it together, but I can say-
Oh, you just did it together?
I just did it together for Hampton Academy.
That's fine. No problem. Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, you're welcome. Anything else? Nope. Okay. So Dr. Campbell, I think we are ready to talk about field trips.
All right, everyone. Okay, so hey, I just wanted to follow you guys, to fill you guys in on the process of what is going on since our meeting on April 22nd. The next day, I sent out an email to our staff, letting them know that field trips would be, field trip forms would be accepted and then proposed to you guys. That's gonna be our process moving forward. We received several, we received, the field trip request that we received, we will be proposing tonight. We would like to focus on the overnight field trips that would be impacting all the grades here. So we will start off with Ms. Bullard, who is proposing environmental camp.
Hi, good evening.
Hello.
We've been going to camp since the 70s. We originally went to camp in Peterborough, New Hampshire, Sergeant Camp. When that camp was getting sold, we wanted to find a camp that had the same values, that had year-round staff, that had a full-time kitchen and that could really listen and cater to our needs and our desires. We did an extensive search and we found Camp Maravista. They have been amazing. Thank you. They are so accommodating, any needs that we have. They have transitioned with the times with all the needs that we've had. So we are continuing to stay with them and after COVID, we did look to transition from the four nights to the three nights. Along with that, one of the biggest changes from Sergeant Camp to Maravista was the counselors did the overnight sessions with the students. So the teachers could at least sleep during those times. And with Maravista, we actually take on that responsibility that we are with the students in the cabins, which has been helpful, especially with the changing times and children's needs. One of our biggest obstacles now is the amount of medications over the counter that parents want with melatonin and things and how can we transition that because it's not manageable. But other than that, students, we have a very small number of students that choose not to go, whether for medical reasons or family reasons. And they do have a camp here that they, we do create for them. And it is just something that's invaluable that we are hoping continues on and Dr. Campbell will talk about the money portion of it. But if you have other questions, I have been attending camp for a very long time. So happy to answer any questions that you might have about it.
Okay. Thank you, Laura.
So yeah, just looking at our books, you know, we want to make sure that we fit underneath our, fit our budgetary reasons. So given 115 students are expected to be coming in next year, the price for, the price for Camp Maravista total would be $60,655. We are gonna have to raise the price for staff, I mean, sorry, for students just so that we can fit our budgetary needs. And so that would be raised up to $325. There's been tradition that we had kept it under $200 for a number of years. We are hoping to ensure that we can support everyone who wants to go. And so in order to do that, we need to raise the costs. The SAU will be budget, well, from the SAU budget, we will be allocating $22,200 for this camp. The reason being, our Camp Maravista is in the, is in the spring and it doesn't give us a lot of time to be fundraising. Something that we need to examine moving forward and how we can incorporate bringing students up from Marston or, you know, with the tools to raise the money so that we can, we can make sure that everyone can go. We are gonna be holding fundraisers for individual needs to lower that cost per person while raising money for the general funds so that we can ensure that we have the money for students who are not able to go. We estimate that the total cost of the families would be around $32,000 and a need for us to fundraise would be about $5,600 for that. Do we have any questions?
I'm wondering if we could address each of these individually? So for instance, we could talk, we could do something about this now?
I agree. Is everybody okay with that?
Then I'd like to make a motion that we accept this proposal and go ahead and vote to allow the environmental school to continue as it has in the past.
Second.
Does anybody have any questions before we vote? All in favor? All right.
Excellent. Thank you very much. All right, so the next school-wide trip that we are gonna be talking about is our eighth grade trip. Here we have two proposals. One would, ooh, and I will let Ms. Dutton lead the way here.
Hello, I'm Andrew Dutton and I've been running the Washington DC trip for a few years. I've been going for more than that. I did put two proposals together with the same company. One is a DC trip for four days and three nights, the same that we did this year, same itinerary. The other one, we would look at going to Boston and Rhode Island for three days and two nights, so one less night, closer to home. The price is based on 80 students. We have eight chaplains and we get a nurse and admin included in that. And they would both be overnight trips, staying at Embassy Suites, different places, obviously. And all meals and tickets and everything would be included in the trip price. So there would be no extra money involved for the kids. This is a DC trip, similar to what we just took. The first night we get there, we travel pretty much all day, then we do night monuments and do the tour. And then the second day, Wednesday, is, you know, we hit the ground running and we do a ton of stuff. The cemetery, the Capitol, we have had talks with Congressman Pappas that day, a museum of natural history, a ghost tour. Of course, there's meals, lunch and dinner in there, breakfast at the hotel. And then you can see Thursday, some more monuments and memorials, Holocaust Museum, American History Museum, Dinner Cruise. The Dinner Cruise is the highlight of the kids' trip. I just went through some of the reviews and that was the number one thing. And then the Ghost Tour and the Holocaust Museum. So those were the top three events this year. And then the last day was the White House and the zoo. So this would be for DC. The trip prices, and then you can see that we require insurance for all the kids. So then under, we would be looking at quads for all the kids, but I did get both of those prices, so I thought I'd put that in there. Dr. Campbell will talk about more pricing in a moment. The Boston Rhode Island trip would include driving down on Wednesday, the 6th, and going to the aquarium, Quincy Market, Duck Tour and a Dinner Cruise again. And then that Thursday, going to Newport, Rhode Island, Cliff Walks, the Breakers Mansion, Battleship Cove, Level 99. And then the last day, going to Fenway, have a tour of Fenway, lunch and then Blue Man Group. So that's the two trips that I put together for you. Those are the initial prices for the Boston Rhode Island trip. Anyone have any questions? Thank you. All right.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dutton. All right. So yeah, obviously these trips are a little more expansive, a little more priced for the families. Either way we go, I have no doubt that we'll be able to cover the cost. We have an exceptional team who's able to raise a ton of money. Ms. O'Neill, I do want to work with the parents who are willing to, to help us and fundraise. The idea behind the PTA was just to organize our efforts, you know, get a, get a point person so we can kind of have, have time to meet and really discuss how we're gonna plan moving forward. We will be accepting donations if you guys, you know, in any form to help out of this fundraiser, for the fundraising, to break down the costs based on the cost per, and the number of families that were going and everything included, we're looking at roughly $100,000. We use the quad price, the four students in there, just because that's what we've done traditionally. We wanted to keep that the same, so the cost per student would be the 1270 there. We would allocate $10,400 to help out, to offset that cost. And so our families would be kind of lifting the burden of $83,000, $84,000 there. Again, these are estimates. We're looking to raise about, we would need to raise, again, around $16,000 there just to make sure that we, we have anyone who wanted to go, who is unable to go. Money is the big thing for us. We just want to make sure that, that money is not the barrier for us. So we just, you know, to, again, focus our energies and how much, how much money we want to, we're gonna need to raise for these events. This is kind of the ballpark and where we are for the cost of Washington DC. Just to move it over to the Rhode Island exam, that's gonna be a little, that's gonna be much less there. We, but again, because we are cutting off a night and the price per student would go down to, we used again, the quad pricing, so at $955. We would then allocate the same amount of money there so we can help offset those costs for those students again. So we wouldn't take, because the night went down, we wouldn't take that money away. We would hope to continue to, to fund that money there. The goal over the next four years is to make sure that all the money that we have is equally balanced between the two trips. And like we said, fundraising would be in and around $10,000 there to make sure that we had enough money to help offset some costs for families who might need assistance there due to the initial price tag there.
Will there, or is there any thought to having opportunity for parent input on either or both? I think both of these sound like amazing trips and I appreciate you putting the effort in to prepare them. But given what we've heard over the last couple of weeks, is there an opportunity for that feedback?
Yeah, I would welcome your opinion on ways to do that on those two trips. You know, we just kind of want to make sure, we are brand new to this new process right now. So outside of presenting the information to you guys and allowing you guys to vote on which one you guys want to allocate the SAU funds, that would be great. But that's, I'm gonna leave that to you on how we want to get that out, if that's something that we want to have right now. Or, you know, that's, I would say, you know, you would, you might know best in that conversation and that.
I'm really not very tech savvy, but is it, is it burdensome to use like a Google survey or just to send to parents and give them, you know, a week or two to respond?
Let me follow up with the tech team on that. I just know that when we send surveys thing, there's, there are, there are certain methods that we need to do that, but that could be just on the kid, kid end of things. I could follow up with an email tomorrow regarding our process moving forward with that. I do just want to check in with, with Tim Smith and make sure that we have everything that we, we don't send out something silly that we're not able to get some feedback from. So I'm sure we can use the same form that Dr. Costa is using right now to get that parent feedback. I do just want to reiterate that we do need to nail down these dates. We have them reserved, but we do need to make sure that we move forward with these companies to make sure that, you know, they aren't kind of sitting with their hands, you know, with their, sitting on their hands and holding these dates and we don't end up filling them.
So what is your goal for when you'd like to book?
Quickly as possible would be great. You know, I think the next board meeting would be pushing up against the end of the year and there are a lot of things that are coming up. You know, I think ideally as soon as possible would be awesome, so.
With the quad pricing, are we still looking at students potentially sharing beds or sleeping on the floor?
Correct. Yeah.
There are two beds and a pull-out couch.
So two beds, two beds on, two beds, a pull-out couch and then the option to either share a bed or, you know, students creatively bring cots. And then they bring, you know, either they'll, they'll, you know, create a, create a bed or, you know, share with a buddy.
The other thing is, I just want to make sure you know that the price difference is, when we go to DC, all those museums are free. So that's why there's a, you know, Boston seems so much, so much more expensive when you compare it. You know, it's less of a drive and stuff, but it's because we have to pay for everything in Boston and Rhode Island. Just something to think about.
Would anybody like to say anything or have any comments? You'll start. Thank you.
All right. The conundrum is, we as a school board have a, have, this, this, I'm gonna be, wow, really out there. Our responsibility of us as a school board is for hiring, is for budget, is for-
Policy.
Policy. We have somehow gotten ourselves into an area that really isn't part of our, part of our responsibility.
Yes.
And we're trying, I think it's because we care so much about our students and they're our kids and I know they're your kids. And we worry because we're parents and grandparents and we, we see so many sides of this. But I have to be honest with you, I think you need to put it back with the parents and the parents have to make this decision. And whether we agree or not, I think this has to be on the parents to make, to make this decision. I mean, the ramifications and the liability, yeah, it'll come back on, on the school and we're just gonna have to accept that. And there are a lot of liabilities here. We have gone over that. But this isn't part of our, this is not one of the three things that a school board is elected for. Am I wrong?
No. It comes back to us, I would say, through budget and policy.
Budget, policy.
Yeah.
I was going to suggest under new business for next time that we actually look at the field trip policy and make a separate policy for overnight trips.
Absolutely. Yes.
Because we're, we're now going into an area that we don't really even have a policy on.
Yeah, there's, what, there was a, there were a couple of paragraphs.
Right. I was even going to go as far as looking at it and saying, cut out the word "class" trip. If you want to make this a trip where you take everything that you've done and have the parents take care of it through a-
Travel agency.
Travel agency, like for instance, the Quebec trip. And make it that way, make it all through a travel agency and leave sort of us kind of out of it, then we don't have- then we don't have to have necessarily a say one way or the other, which we kind of don't because it's not part of our, it's really not part of our say.
Does that have anything to do with Maravista that vote was just on?
I'm sorry.
No, I don't think so. I mean, I think we voted on Maravista, it's approved, I think, for next year. It is good.
The way I look at it, and again, only because I've been around this for so long, Maravista is a different animal because it is an environmental school program. It is, yes, it is a class trip in some respects, but it is also a school program. It is more of a curriculum. It's, it's taking the school program and just putting it in a different setting, which makes it different than a class trip per se. And maybe I'm not making sense on that. And I only know the difference because I've been on those trips and I've been on class trips. And it's a, it's a much, it's just a different animal. It just is. Laura, do you understand what I'm saying?
Well, it's self-contained.
It is self-contained. It is very much more, I don't know, like, I know from teaching all of those lessons and things like that. It's just, it's just a different, it's just different. I, I wish I could explain it better.
The kids are younger, they go, they stay in one place, they come back. It seems like the potential for problems is less with the younger kids.
Yes.
Would that be fair for my teachers?
It's, it's within, it's within an hour and a half, you know, if there's an issue or a problem. But mostly it is, it's an environmental school program. It is a curriculum. It is a set course that you take for a week as opposed to a class trip. And again, that word "class trip" is where I guess I have a problem, "class." But again, it's not really part of our issue because we've got three things that we are elected to take care of, and this really doesn't fit into it. So now I've just put myself right out there.
You did not. It was, sorry. So I guess, of course, no, go right ahead.
I was just picking at our policies, and I just wonder as a way of sort of like marrying what Andrea's point is in terms of, this kind of falls back to more the administration and the parents, but also giving Dr. Campbell and other administrators an easy and sort of a framework to be able to communicate with parents that doesn't involve having to reinvent the wheel every time maybe he's seeking that input. Do we have authority? Because I'm looking at a couple of our policies, and it seems like we can create some sort of parent advisory council. Has that been done in the past? Is that something we could explore so that each time they don't have to go through this process, that they can?
We could. I mean, I kind of think that's what the school, I'm sorry, hold on. That's a little bit what the school board is. I mean, we have been elected kind of to do that. I don't, I think, I'm making it seem like I am opposed to, opposed to there being a parent council. I'm, I'm not. I don't know what it looks like and who is in charge of putting it together. But I, I just don't know that it's the school board's job to put it together, kind of going back to what Andrea said about policy and budget and hiring. It doesn't mean there can't be one. I just don't know that it's the school board's...
There have been parent advisory groups in the past, and, and they have been a separate entity, and they have brought suggestions to a school board. But it's very much parents have done that. They've gotten themselves together. What I see happening, it's awesome. I think parents, wonderful. They should do it. It would be great. But you run into the same problem that I think you see now. Like, when do you have the time to do it? When do, when, you know, when can people get together? Well, I can do it now, I can do it then. I'm not blaming anybody or anything like that. I get it. I totally get it. And again, if parents want to come together and do it, more power to them. That's awesome.
100%.
Yes. Absolutely.
Yep.
And we have had it in the past, and they have come to board and said things.
So I think like what you're, just to really, make it really clear for everybody watching at home, I think what we're talking about is parents organizing themselves as some sort of 501(c)(3) or booster club that's going to support the school.
If they want to raise money. I would say if they don't want to raise money, if they just wanted to be more informational, then that's getting organized, figuring out who it's going to be, and figuring out times to come in and meet with administration. So, yeah, I think that would be great. None of this tells Dr. Campbell what we want him to do. I don't know, we have, I vote we have a few options. We can kick the can down the road. We can do nothing. It's not what Dr. Campbell's asking us to do, but we can wait until next month, see if they've had some chances to talk to the community, to talk to parents. There was concern about us missing a board member, and, you know, hopefully we'll have everybody here next month. But, you know, kids get sick, people travel, and so we don't know. We can't guarantee that. We can vote to approve both trips. Let them take that approval. Decide whether they want to talk to parents, talk to staff. We can approve one. We can approve the other. We can approve...
I, I want to move that we approve that they can go with either one of the trips, but ask that they talk to parents and come to a decision after that.
So we're going to basically, sorry, go ahead, Neil.
So I just, you know, like you said, we're coming up to the end of the year. So if we're moving forward with this trip, we'll reach out to Ms. O'Neal on how best we can communicate these things because it seems like we're missing the mark on several ways that we're communicating. So my hope is to, is to connect with the board and how we can, how we can present this information to the staff, get some input, and then, and then make a, make a decision based on the information that we have. In transparency, we can present that information to you guys at the next board meeting. But Andrea, if you've got something to say, did you want?
I'm just really confused, I guess, because I was asked to come up with some proposals.
Thank you.
And if it wasn't going to be a proposal, then I'm not sure why I did it. So I'm just trying to get clarification on this whole thing.
Yep, that's what, and that's what we are trying to figure out. Yes, we want to offer you.
You're right, and I threw the spanner in the works by clarifying what our position as a board is. And I apologize, Andrea, but I agree with Molly that I think as a board, I would second what you say, that we agree that either one of these trips we would go along with, contingent upon, you all come together as parents and teachers, decide what you want, and if you come up with the plan that you want, then...
I know, that's, that leaves, that leaves the administration in a little bit of a tough place.
Well, we'll touch base with Ms. O'Neal tomorrow. We'll, we'll make sure that, you know, we're in the board, and we'll make sure that we get the information out. My general taking is that we would go in a majority rule situation. These percentage of people want to do something. We can have a discussion with that at the next board meeting if it gets too close.
I would just ask that it not be the percentage of people who respond, but it be the percentage of parents for seventh graders. Right, if you have, if you have a response from 10 people and nine of them agree, is that actually a fair representation of seventh grade parents?
How, yeah, I think it's their responsibility.
I know that that's not an actual, that doesn't tell you how to do it. That is just a concern of mine. Sorry, go ahead.
I think what the parents are asking for, and I think, I think we all recognize and agree with this though, is the parents just want to have a seat at the table, but ultimately, if the decision is made by the administration as to what the best fit for a trip is, both of these options look fabulous. I think they just want a chance to speak. And I think if you're, I don't know that you have to define rules personally as to how you're going to reach that final decision, but as long as you invite that dialogue, I think that brings everybody together.
Yeah, so to that point, I do have my, my coffee talk. I will send out a Google link too, just so that anyone who's at work can zoom in, just to the piece of the technology and things. We will, we'll send out that. That will be on the 28th in the morning. We will send out communication on how we can best send out a survey. We'll retrieve that message, and then we will share that, share that information with you and make a decision on which, which field trip that the community and the staff and the administration decide is best for us.
So a couple of things. So number one, we haven't actually voted on anything. We declared, we were all sort of in agreement, but we didn't actually vote on anything. There is that. I would like to say, the one thing we haven't talked about is how the trip was last week, they just came back, and how did it go? We had concerns.
I will let Andrea start off with that. I did not attend the trip, so I will let the three people who did attend the trip who are here will attest to that, and she's got a slide here.
Just before we do that, do you need us to, like, rescind what we had said?
I feel like we're still in discussion.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. All right.
Hi, how did you, how did you feel it went?
It was a great trip, all in all. Of course, there were some bumps. There's always some bumps. They're eighth graders, and they're still learning. Reflecting on 2025, I put this in there. Students were physically more prepared this year. Not sure why or how that happened, but that was excellent. Students struggled a little bit with coping skills and self-advocacy skills. This year was the first year that we did not allow them to have phones a lot at all. They had them for about 45 minutes in the morning and then about 45 minutes at night. And the kids and parents' feedback was that that was great. So even the kids told us, like, they were happy that they didn't have their phones too. So that was amazing. And then you can see on the side some benefits of the trip. Real-world connections, government, you know how it works, build resilience. They were able to order food on their own and manage some of their own money. But it was a great trip, so. Questions about the trip? Of course.
I'm sorry, not an actual question for you, an administration question. Are we going to have nurses for our overnight field trips in '25, '26?
I think we're going to have to reexamine what that looks like. Not sure if one nurse is feasible, is feasible, with some information from our nurse. She is responsible for a lot of different things, not only ensuring the daily health care of the students, but administering the proper medication. There were several instances that kept herself and several of the administrators and teachers up late at night. And so to ensure safety of medications in the morning, we would have to alter what we're doing, whether that would be someone, a traveling nurse or bringing two nurses or whatever it might be. Just, there was, you know, just kind of going over some of the notes. Having one nurse really kind of requires this nurse to document this information. She was working constantly due to the late nights. There was roughly about four hours of sleep each night. When they were in transit, she was making sure that everything that she was documenting was on, that was on there, was in our SNAP platform. It's several documented events that occurred on different days. And then kind of medication-wise, we were in the 60s about how many different medications were distributed throughout the day. So we just want to make sure that, you know, if people are entrusting us for something, that we set up our nurses for success. Their licensure is at, is at risk, you know, if they do make a mistake. We just want to make sure that they are safe, and so are our kids, and we're not having someone who's super tired handing out medication in the mornings and documenting those. So we are going to have to reexamine that, what that's going to look like. We'll have to probably reflect on how much it's going to cost and ways around that, unwilling participants, and all those types of things. So we just don't think that it was feasible to just send one nurse because of the demand at night and during the day. Our nurse did a great job doing it, but we just want to make sure that we're safe and making sure that our kids are safe. So that's what we're, something we will be examining.
So we are potentially looking at two traveling nurses?
We are going to be looking at all options. So yeah, a traveling nurse, having someone from, you know, we'll see. We have to really approach those discussions, but yeah. Just sending one nurse would, I think, is, was not feasible during this trip, is my understanding.
Would any of the administrators who participated, do you have anything to say? And if you don't, that's okay.
The kids were great. They had a great time. It was a really great experience. They made a lot of friends, and it was really well-received. And, you know, we did have our bumps along the way, but our staff was phenomenal of handling everything that came up. And so I can't thank our staff enough because they really, you know, late nights, not a lot of sleep, and they handled everything amazingly with every situation that came up. So we're really lucky to have the staff that we have.
I just want to say, from the beginning of our conversations, I think the most compelling and concerning point for me has always been the nursing piece because we're talking about professionals who have licensure that they want to protect, and we're talking about the safety of our children as a whole. And even two nurses, I want to make this trip happen, but even two nurses, like with, how many students? 110, 100, how many did we end up taking?
95 took through this trip. 115 will be going, tentatively will be going to environmental camp, and then we're looking at 80 for next year's trip for seventh grade. Sorry, seventh grade going into eighth grade.
That's a lot, and I just want the public to understand why that is a super valid, important concern that we all need to be worried about. And my follow-up question to that is, like, we've already approved the budget for next year, and now we're looking, I would love if we can put the money in the budget to make sure we're fulfilling the medical needs of all of our students and reducing barriers. But what happens if a travel nursing's expensive? My little sister's a travel nurse, she gets paid a lot. Like, and they're hard to find for trips like this. Like, what happens if that blows the budget?
I think, you know, I don't think there's going to be any obstacle that we can, that we can overcome. So this community is very resilient. I plan to make sure that we work collaboratively with everyone in the community, working with our stakeholders, community stakeholders, and finding resources to ensure that, you know, we are able to move forward with nurses and safely provide an opportunity for our kids to enjoy a trip wherever we may go.
Does anybody else have any more questions or anything you'd like to say before we vote?
I think I would. I, first off, any opportunity I have to spend with children is just, it's the highlight of my day, and it's a joy. I loved spending the time with the kids on the bus. I loved being on the trip with everyone. It was impressive to see this group come together, knowing this group from third grade when they entered Mars in school. In fact, we had some really great conversations with kids I've known for a long time. And it was, it was remarkable to see the growth. And I have to say, you're absolutely right, Andrea, Mrs. Dutton and Mrs. Levine, that children really rose to the, to the challenge. But I would be remiss if I wasn't a little bit more forthcoming. And so I have to be a little bit forthcoming. It was great for most children. It really was. And the fact that, in speaking with some of you even tonight, and speaking with some of you even that evening when you came to pick up or when we spoke between now and then, you shared with me what a wonderful week it was, and you were just grateful and thankful, and I feel the same way. But what you should also know, and what you're alluding to, Dr. Campbell, is there were many of us, chaperones included, that were up till well after midnight and getting up at 5:30 in the morning. So we, we were used to that. We operated on a little bit of sleep, and we can do that, and we can do that well, and we can crash when we get home. But there were some significant events that really did happen. Now, did it, did it ruin it for children? No, it didn't because to the tribute, to really, to the credit of the team, we worked through them. We did work through them. But I will tell you that there was things like illegal paraphernalia that we had to deal with. We had weapons that we had to deal with under Safe Schools Act. There were mental health issues. There were, there was a very serious life-threatening situation that we worked through. There was a situation that required us to displace students into chaperones' rooms at night for sleeping. We had some students that wandered off. We did find them. And to your point, we had a nurse functioning on very little sleep. We also had bus issues and didn't get home till 2:00 in the morning. We had issues with roommates that we worked through. And you would never know about it because of how well it was handled. It was handled... It was handled beautifully by all of us, by by these people here, but by everyone, by the children, by the staff, and by, um, just everyone who was involved. But those are the things that we worry about. Those are the things that probably keep us up at night. Because if anything goes wrong, it falls on our shoulders as the adults. So I just want you to know that there's nothing I love more than these children. And we don't do this in punitive ways. It's not like we're trying to take something away from our children. We would never do that. That's not who we are. We want to give them every opportunity, every opportunity that we can. But there are some things that are just out of our control. Even with the extensive planning, bumps happen. It's not to say we can't work through it, but there's some significant bumps. Sadly, one child had to go homesick. It happened. These things do happen, and those those fall under us. So I just have to let you know that this is a serious decision that weighs heavily on the leadership team, that weighs heavily on the board. And I get it. I get it. It's a beautiful trip. It's a wonderful trip. It's my second time going. I love going. And I understand that the board is putting it back in their hands. But it's not an easy decision for all the reasons I've just said. And so I just wanted to say that, and I I I just want you to know that we we don't, we're not doing it for effect. We're not doing it for, we know our children. We see them every day. And even with the best of intentions, these things can happen. The they're middle schoolers. It's very different. We're taking them far away when 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 unfortunately, some parents are not in a position to just fly down or drive down and get their children. When in fact, some of them may not have, might not have been, should have been there, right? And that's the stuff that weighs heavily on us. I appreciate every, I appreciate your sentiments, and I get it, and I appreciate the work you do, Mrs. Dutton and all of you. But these are big decisions that the board weighs in on, the leadership team weighs in on. So I, just as I understand where you're coming from, I hope you can understand where I am coming from as a superintendent, as someone who knows these children, who cares very deeply for these children, and shoulders the responsibility of their safety and well-being. That's all.
Thank you. So if we have no more comments, no more questions, we have a motion on the floor. Did you second? Did we have a second? Okay. All in favor of approving both trips, correct? Both proposed trips with the administration to decide which one will work the best for our families? Okay, all in favor? Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell.
Um, we should address, at least in a, in some way, that there was one more, um, agenda item, which was Quebec. And the Quebec trip is currently being tabled until the fall, correct? The the request is being tabled currently, correct?
Yeah, the request will be tabled. Um, we wanted to spend time to focus on, uh, where we are for, um, for these school-wide field trips. So we'll figure out that process as well.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so that does move us to six point four, BEDH, Public Comment and Participation at Board Meeting, page two, B five. So I have to remember. B five. Okay, so. For anybody who is not sort of aware why we have this out and why we are talking about it, um, the Public Comment and Participation at Board Meetings policy, which is BEDH number five, says in order to comply with the official minutes requirements of RSA ninety-one dash A colon two, Roman numeral two, speakers shall identify themselves clearly for the record, including name, address, and the group, if any, is represented. So we did receive a request from a community member after our last meeting. Um, and for sort of personal reasons, um, this person did not want to provide their address when they spoke. We have a policy that requires it. Um, I believe I did go and check that RSA, and I believe the RSA does not actually require the person's address. So I think we just wanted to see if anybody had any issues with amending that. Okay, so we are, page thirty-three, it's a little out of order. It's not with the rest of the policies because we were addressing it kind of individually. So it was closer to Lois's presentation, so page thirty-three.
If I could weigh in on that?
Of course.
They, um, so I was talking to some other districts, what they do. I think what the person wanted was to make sure that their address was not included in the minutes, which I understand that. One of the things that another district I know does is they can, we can have people sign in so that they don't have to say their address, and we don't have to put them in the minutes, and then we would have it. And that way, um, they could just say their name, but we would have the address as proof of residence, which is required. That might be a way around it, just a thought. For your consideration.
I do like that, yes, because I did understand she had very good reasons for not wanting to include her address publicly. Um, so does anybody have any objections to that? And if not, why don't we punt this to the Policy Committee? And you guys can can make changes and come back and come back with a proposal.
Yep, we can do that.
That would be great.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so I believe we are at Hiring and Nominations. I have, did we have any hand-carried? I have one.
No, I think all we have is what's in there, but I am gonna ask you afterwards if I can have permission to hire before the next board meeting because we do have a candidate I am meeting very shortly. We just don't want to lose anyone.
Okay.
But we'll, we can go through the nominations first.
Okay.
All right. So I'm on page seventy-nine.
Yep.
Um, so the first one is going to be, uh, seventh grade math teacher Stacy Leonard, who is going to be replacing Adam Goodwin. And so I would like to make a nomination to nominate Stacy Leonard.
Do I have a motion to accept the nomination? Candace?
Motion to accept.
Do I have a second? Molly will second, okay. Any questions about this position? All in favor?
Thank you very much. There were. My understanding is they did. I will.
She can't hear. So Andrea was double-checking to make sure that any candidates for, uh, these teaching positions who did not receive the the job were contacted directly to let them know that they didn't receive it.
I I believe that, um, all of them were interviewed, um, that were qualified. And they did first and second run, first round, second rounds, and then they had a final candidate, who they sent to me.
Perfect.
Yep.
But it's a follow-up. We've been talking about that a lot because there's nothing quite like coming in, especially for a second interview, and then being ghosted, right? And you just, you wait, you wait, and you never hear anything, and then, oh, you hear through the grapevine that the job was filled, so.
That's, that's.
And we try not to do business that way, but there's nothing wrong with following up and making sure that letters are being sent or calls are being made.
And that's part of our, um, hiring process that we've been very clear about, so I I will double-check, but, thank you. Thanks for bringing it to my attention. Um, and then the next one, we had an unfilled vacancy, um, Special Ed Teacher Case Manager at Marsen School, Brianna Roman. So she, we'd like to nominate her for Special Ed Case Manager.
All right.
I'll move to accept the nomination.
Okay, I'll second. Does anybody have any questions on this position? I know that the staff will be very, very happy to have this position filled.
Yes, they will.
It's been a, it's been a long year.
Yep.
Any questions? All in favor?
Thank you. And then we're Director of Technology. Again, this was also unfilled this year.
Yep.
We'd like to nominate Tim Smith to serve as our Director of Technology for next year.
I'll move to accept his nomination.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Thank you, we are.
Welcome, Tim Smith.
Yeah, we are, um, in the process of, um, now looking at the data person. He was so good at that, so, yeah. But thank you. And I do, so just to permission to, um, hire.
Yes. Okay.
Between now and, I'd like to hire as I can because what will happen.
The time of year, we need to hire people. And so, does anybody have any objections to Lois directly making offers? We, she will bring them to us after so that we have the
I will.
all of their information.
Yep, I will, thank you.
That would be great.
Yep.
Okay, we are getting there, Policy Review. So we do have one, two, three, four, five, six first reads. And so those can be moved to the next meeting, so everybody take a look at those, read through them. I do have one change I'd like to recommend on BEDC, which is quorum.
Yep.
Um, it's just an outdated word. Um, it is this spot right here, when it, when it's not reasonably practical for a member to attend in person, blah, 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 may attend via telephone, Skype, or other electronic means. Skype doesn't exist anymore.
How about virtual?
So we could just do virtually, or Zoom, or however we wanted to to word that.
Yep.
Uh, video call, something along those lines. Um, so we will, everybody take a chance to read those. We will look at those again next month. Um, I think we actually can go ahead and look at DFA and vote on that. I think Mariah probably needs us to go ahead and do that now. That is a recurring thing. We do look at that every year. So it's not a change. It's just a review of the investment policy.
Required by law.
And required by law. So does anybody have any questions about it? Do I have a motion to, I guess we accept this, approve, reapprove? I'll vote motion to accept. Molly, thank you for. Les taught me to do that. He's like, just point when you need someone. Candace, would you like to second the acceptance of that? All right, all in favor? Okay, so that is approved again for this year. Okay, we are, and we will touch base again on the other ones, uh, next month. All right. We are getting there, Consideration of Minutes, Consent Agenda. So we actually have, I would vote, we have these under Consent Agenda, and this is something we've never really done. But one of the reasons we have a consent agenda is to streamline the accepting of things like minutes. There isn't any need, I don't think, for us to go through and accept them one at a time. We can vote to accept the consent agenda. So does anybody have any objections to that? Um, it would be minutes for the public meeting of April eight, the non-public meeting of April eight, and the special meeting of, let's see. I have meeting minutes of April twenty, oh, I'm sorry, the Legislative Roundtable Discussion on the twenty-first, which did have a quorum, and the special meeting of April twenty-second.
I move that we, uh, accept the consent agenda.
All right. I'll second that. All in favor? All of that?
Do I need to say if there's any spelling errors?
You absolutely feel free to.
It doesn't really.
What page?
Well, my name is misspelled on one-eleven and one-twenty-three.
Okay.
One-eleven, let's get it right.
One-twenty-three. And the only reason I say this is because
People often miss.
Forty-nine years ago.
I got it right there.
I was told it's one P, no H, and an A. And I had to memorize that.
I have to look it up.
Before.
I look it up regularly. I don't know how many times I've written your name.
I had to remember.
Look it up many times.
One P, no H, and an A.
Is that in the prenup? Was that in the prenup?
Okay, so we are right at the end.
Not a big deal, but a certain person was looking these over, and he said, hey, hey, hey. I said, what? He said, they spelled our name wrong. I said, they spelled my name wrong. He said, well, it's my name too. Please, get over yourself and get away.
Do we have anyone else who would like to, um, use the, any of the remaining public comment time?
Megan Holberg again, Presidential Circle. I just want to thank, um, I'm sorry, what was your name?
Oh, Dr. Campbell?
No. Thank you. Ms. Dutton for putting together these proposals. I know she worked really hard to do it.
Yes.
And I don't feel like we got a lot accomplished. While I do appreciate that we have put this back to the administration to reach out to the parents, I felt like there was a lot of commentary and back and forth going on here that almost felt like we were left even more confused than what we came in for. So that's the only thing I want to say about that, but I also just wanted to say thank you to her for putting that together. And Dr. Campbell, there is a whole slew of parents that are just waiting for you to let us know what we need to do. Candace, if it means getting in touch with you to help with five-oh-three-C or whatever we need to do, we're here. We want to make this happen. We want these kids to be able to enjoy something like DC, which, while I appreciate Boston and Rhode Island, I will say, I can bet most of the kids in Hampton have already been to every single one of those exhibits. Washington DC obviously is a very different experience. There's a lot of things that they may not even get to see if they don't come here, and I understand we're gonna leave this up to the parents, and I think that's great. I just wanted to make that comment there too, so. That was it. I just wanted to say thank you. Please reach out to us because we're here to help you.
All right. Do we have anyone else who would, is here for public comment? All right.
Good evening, Nathan Page, eighty-three Hemlock Haven. I was at the company, my son, on the trip to DC. And I heard a little, a little bit while I was eating my supper that there was some issues. As someone on the outskirts of the event, I saw no issues. I think Mrs. Dutton and the crew of Chaperones did an outstanding job, uh, down there in DC. Other than the the bus breakdown, which is not her fault, that's, things happen. And, um, it was a great time. It's, I do have a question, a comment about, um, the security on the trip at the hotel, and I'm not gonna comment here. I'll talk to you individually after.
Sure.
But, uh, overall, it was a great time, and it was, my son was very thankful that he got to go. And he tried to get out of our room three different times. So it was, thank you all who, uh, and it was only Molly and, you know, three of you that were here last time around when I asked for permission. And it was, and thank you very much for granting that. He had a great time. We went, he, he got up in the morning, went to the room where he would have been staying and hung out with his buddies. Afterwards, he went and hung out with his buddies in that room and then come back to our room at ten-fifteen and had a great time. And I just want to thank you for that, and hopefully those accommodations can be made in the future for other students as well. But the, uh, overall, the trip, I thought, went, went swimmingly. And I talked to most of you after the, Mrs. Costa and the other chaperones after, after they got back in the evening, and everything seemed to be going great. So thank you for that, and I look forward to how you continue the trips in the future. Yep.
Thank you, Nathan. And to be clear, there was never, none of our concerns about what happened had to do with the chaperones or the teachers. Uh, everything that I have heard is that you guys did a great job.
Yeah.
So we do really, this is, this trip is is above and beyond for middle school teachers' friends. So we do really appreciate all that you do. You guys did a great job, and we, we heard you, we heard you guys did great too, Nathan, so good job. So, is there anyone else here for public comment? So is there anyone else here for public comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. I do believe we have a couple of things we want to discuss in non-public.
We could, yep, we have a personnel.
Okay. So I'm going to move that we go into call it non-public under RSA ninety-one dash A three-two-A-dash-N. Roll call. Ma'am? Yes? Andrew?
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
Like, zonin' out.
All right, so we are in non-public.
Okay. Now we're on, we are out of non-public. Anything, anyway?
Okay, we are out of non-public. Would anybody like to move to adjourn? That's what I'm waiting on. Motion to adjourn. Thank you. Second, all in favor? Aye, adjourned.